Okay. Welcome to the October 15th Planning Commission meeting. All members are present, as the record reflect. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For the city meetings, rules, and procedures, public comments are generally limited to five minutes or less time if a large number of speakers is anticipated, or if approved by the Chair. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission, and if relevant, the Commission may direct them to staff. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. Please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided at the back of the chambers. During this portion of the meeting, those in the council chamber are permitted to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. Zoom participation during the general public comment period will not be accepted. Please note that the Commission's actions are final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days.
At this time, Chair Roberts, we have no speaker cards for those here in person?
Okay, thank you. Our next item is the consent calendar. There's one set of minutes for the regular meeting on September 17, 2024. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we will move on to our business items. Our first business item, E1, is a time extension for Lazy Dog Restaurant Design Review Approval. And I will ask Miguel Contreras to give us their report.
Good evening, Commission, and good evening, members of the public. Miguel, City of Brentwood Planning Division, I'm here to present the Lazy Dog Time Extension, which is application TE 24-001, which requests a one-year extension of the 9/26/2023 approval by the City Council of a Lazy Dog Restaurant located at Sand Creek Road and Highway 4. The time extension was filed on the 19th of this year, meeting the requirements to file an extension. There are no changes proposed to any portion of the plans. The applicant indicated that a time extensions requested due to logistics between the Lazy Dog being constructed and perhaps a future hotel. And staff has added that communication in my staff report for you to review. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 24-043, approving time extension number 24-001. That would conclude staff's presentation. If there's any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Contreras. Are there any clarifying questions on the staff report? Commissioner Floyd?
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the driveways that are still on the approach, the speed-up ramp where people are coming on to Sand Creek Road. Is there something we can do to say that if they do manage to find a way to open up a different entrance over by, I guess, between, what is the store over there?
Ross.
Yeah, over by Ross, that they would maybe not use those that are right on the street? Because that's where people are speeding up, and it's pretty dangerous over there.
Yeah, so that conversation happened at the Planning Commission's approval last year, and it happened at the City Council level as well. The applicant indicated that the property owner for the Ross property wouldn't give authority for that internal connection. And therefore, City Council approved the project as proposed with the write-in from Sand Creek Road.
Okay, and I think that I saw a diagram when the other hotel was proposed there, a possibility. So, all right, well, thank you.
Commissioner Spelling?
So, I'm referencing the letter that was in the packet from Kirk the Clark. He mentions that, the reason why I'm asking is because I'm trying to understand the timeline of what the time extension. I guess first, why one year versus a two-year time extension?
If we were to do a two-year time extension, then the map that was approved with this DR and this DR would be out of sync. So with the way we're doing it now, if it does require another time extension next year, it would be for both the map and the design review at the same time.
Okay. So, it says it's because they don't, they found another hotel operator, and will be soon be making planning submittals, putting both projects on schedule commence construction mid-2025. So when I see mid-25, I think of June, right, beginning of the middle of the year. Have they submitted plans to be evaluated for the hotel? So, in order to start break ground on the hotel, because Lazy Dog's ready to go, it has been, right? Lazy Dog's been ready to build for how many years?
One year.
One year?
Or, I mean, Lazy Dog has had its entitlement for one year.
Correct. So the city's done everything they need to do for Lazy Dog to break ground, should they choose to break ground, or whoever, the developer, right?
Yeah, they would need to submit building plans in order to get them approved to be able to break ground.
Okay. So, in order for the hotel to sync, because the letter alludes to the part to, requires the hotel to be on a similar construction schedule as to avoid operational conflicts, right? If they submitted plans to the city for evaluation for a hotel today, how long would it take for it to come to Planning Commission for approval?
Just like any project, it's dynamic. It could be anywhere from four, five, six, up to nine, 10 months. It depends on how the project's being proposed, how close it is to meeting the city's requirements, how quickly they are to respond to Planning's comments. So, realistically, in my professional opinion, is more than likely not. I don't think entitlements and anything will, I mean, I don't think entitlements would meet that timeline.
Okay. Is there anyone from the applicant going to be here tonight or on the phone?
The applicant indicated that they would be here. I don't see them.
All right. The reason why I ask is because that's a question for them. If the, you know, I want to make sure, you know, sometimes the city, people say the city is holding things up, and I know people are excited about Lazy Dog. That doesn't seem to be the case here.
No, certainly not.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brand?
No questions.
Commissioner Johnson?
No questions.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, at this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant who will have 10 minutes. The applicant can come up to the podium. Timing is perfect.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Okay, very good.
Sir, real quick, if you can raise that podium, hitting the left black button on top. Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, great.
All right, good evening. I'm Ryan Nicholson with LRG Investors, the developer of the parcel at Sand Creek. And we received Planning Commission approval for a design review of Lazy Dog, as you know. And the project has, it's about five and a half acres. It's always been, we've always planned it to be a comprehensive development with uses for the entire site, and ideally, a hotel to take the other half of the property effectively. Our agreement with Lazy Dog requires us to have that hotel use and effectively have them go at the same time. They don't want to be too far out ahead and have their restaurant open and then have construction of a hotel going on, you know, dust and all the nuisances of that. They don't mind going a little bit ahead, but they're required to close escrow and then start construction upon getting the design review approval for the hotel. As you know, may know, we had a hotel deal going. Unfortunately, that deal died. It was an East Coast developer of hotels that didn't really understand the city and I think what the city wanted and needed. Since then, we do have a new hotel that we're working with that I think is going to be much better. They're Bay Area-based. They have a lot of properties on the West Coast and a lot of experience developing here in the East Bay even. And the brand that they want to develop is, I think, going to be a much more desirable brand for the city of Brentwood and not have the 30-day extended stay issues that we had with the previous hotel. So I expect that we'll have a planning application in January, hopefully sooner. We're pushing them to get that done sooner, and if we can, we will. And then hopefully get back before you to have that project reviewed.
Are there any clarifying questions for the applicant? Commissioner Spelling?
I know you just walked in. I think you would have heard the questions I'm going to ask you. So, what I was trying to understand from the letter that was sent was just the syncing up constructions. And one of the things you just mentioned to me sounds like that the building of the Lazy Dog Restaurant is dependent upon approval of the hotel?
That is correct.
And the hotel is not guaranteed to be approved?
Correct. I feel pretty good about it. I think that these guys are, they're very well-seasoned hotel operators.
And so, just to be clear, so if the hotel's not approved, then Lazy Dog will not be built?
It's not that it won't be built, it's that they are not required to close escrow with us and start building until we have the entitlements for the hotel. So, could that change? Sure, possibly. But that's our current, the terms of our current deal with them.
Okay. So, the syncing up of the construction is, concern's the wrong word, but point of interest based on the letter, right? Because I understand the need or the desire to build both, either simultaneously or very close together. But based on your submittal of January, approval of the hotel in order to break ground and actually build in a similar timeline doesn't seem like they're going to sync up.
The hotel will definitely come second. Lazy Dog, because they're going on the north part of the property facing Sand Creek, they have to complete all of their site work, including the two drive aisles, and bringing the utilities down to the property line between them and the hotel. So, they're going to have probably 90 to 120 days' worth of site work just to be able to let the hotel start. So, let's say the hotel gets Planning Commission approval in May or something, just making updates. You know, Lazy Dog would close 30 days later, so that they close in June. They're probably not going to have all of that site work done until September, October. So if the hotel gets entitlements in May, they would be going through their plan check process during that timeframe. And, you know, they're definitely going to be behind Lazy Dog, but not much.
Okay, so, but today Lazy Dog, if they chose, could start building today, or start the process to build today?
They could.
And they have not. And that was their choice?
Yeah, and the terms of our contract, so.
The reason why I'm asking is because there's a lot of comments out on social media that, you know, why is Lazy Dog taking so long? And it's really, I just want to make it clear, too, I want to make sure I understand and we understand what's driving the delay, but also so that the public understands the delay. This is nothing really on what, I understand with the deal that you have in place, but I wanted to make sure that it's out there, because I think there's a desire for that project. But want also to make sure that it's not tied to directly and only if the hotel is approved, because the hotel, you know, has to come before the Planning Commission, whoever is here, when it comes before, and may or may not get approved.
Right. And, you know, believe me, we want Lazy Dog to go sooner than later. As the developer, it benefits me. It, I think, adds value to the remainder parcel, even if there wasn't a hotel there. So, we're pushing. They are, I will say that Lazy Dog remains very committed to the project. I spoke with their Chief Development Officer just on Friday. We stay in touch every week or so. And they're taking all the steps. They're working with the Contra Costa Water District on that, those site improvements that overlay the easement. They're doing things behind the scenes, spending money, doing civil work. And so, all indicators are that they're moving forward.
Okay. And on average, do you have an idea of how long it would take to build Lazy Dog, and then how long it would take to construct once the ground is broken on the hotel? If it's approved?
Lazy Dog is probably in the neighborhood of seven months. The hotel probably a couple months longer.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Just a quick question. From what I'm understanding, we had a hotel that pulled out earlier previously. So, just in case this hotel doesn't follow through or somehow the deal doesn't work, what's going to happen then? What do you foresee happening?
Well, I think that the market is, there's market demand for a hotel, and we've seen that. We've received letters of intent from numerous hotel properties or hotel developers, and I think we've been able to pick the best one here. So, if something should happen with this one, there are others that are interested. At one time, we had thought about doing a second restaurant there. The larger format sit-down restaurants are not very active right now, with the exception of Lazy Dog. Lazy Dog does very well still in all of their Bay Area locations, Concord, Dublin. Their sales volumes are very strong. In fact, they mentioned to me when I spoke with them last week that where a lot of their competitors' volumes are off, you know, double-digit percentages, they're not. They're doing quite well. So, yeah, getting another restaurant to go there would be tough. I do think that the site makes a lot of sense for a hotel. The reason that the previous hotel developer pulled out was very specific to, they were trying to do an extended stay concept. And I guess initially didn't understand or know about the city's prohibition on stays longer than 30 days. And once they got into that, really got their arms around it, it just wasn't going to work for them.
A reason why we're tying, is there, what is the reason why you're tying the two?
It's really not my decision. It's the, both of them want to go together. They don't want to be open and then have, you know, construction coming much, much later, or not knowing what's going to happen with the other parcel. The hotel, similarly, can't, we can't do anything with the south parcel until Lazy Dog happens.
Very good. Well, I am hopeful, and I trust and believe that the hotel that you have communicated to us here will be a great fit, and you can carry on. One question, or I'm kind of curious to know, once they sign on, once you know for sure that the entitlements are in place, I understand that you've given us an example of a timetable, but I'm wondering if you could begin the process a lot sooner than later, because now you know for sure the entitlements are in place? Or is it just that you're trying to make sure the construction? Is it more aligned with the construction, or is it more aligned with the entitlement?
I would say that they're both equally important. The entitlement for the hotel will provide Lazy Dog with the certainty that the hotel is coming.
Okay, all right then. Well, I'm certainly, and the community is certainly looking forward to both coming into our community. And I thank you so much. If there are more questions, we'll ask you to come back up.
Okay, thanks very much.
You're very welcome. Okay.
Yeah. At this time, I have no speaker cards for those here in person. Anyone on Zoom who would like to speak regarding this item, please raise your hand now. Anyone on Zoom who would like to speak regarding this item, please raise your hand now. We have no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Well, at this time, I'll close public hearing. I'll look for a vote.
Are you looking for a motion?
Through the chair. This is a public comment, so we do not need a motion to close.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does the planning commission have any further discussion on this item? Okay. Well, then I look for a, a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution 24-043 approving a one-year time extension TE 24-001 for design review, 22-011 for a new Lazy Dog Restaurant located on the southeast corner of Sand Creek Road and Highway 4 northbound off ramp.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we are going to move on with E2, application for design review approval for the two new single-family homes. And Jennifer Hagan will give us a staff report.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the commission. Tonight, we're here to consider applications for design review approvals for two new single-family homes on Caleb Place. On May 6th of this year, the applicant submitted design review applications for the subject properties requesting a single exception from the interim objective design standards. Since no variances were being requested, the approving body at the time was the design review subcommittee rather than the planning commission. On August 22nd, the design review subcommittee considered the applications and could not come to a consensus and referred the application to the planning commission. Then on September 17th, the planning commission reviewed the applications, however, were not supportive of the non-compliance with the interim objective design standards. The applicant has now submitted revised plans for consideration that meet all interim objective design standard for the planning commission's consideration. The applications before you tonight include DR 24008 for a new 2,353-square-foot two-story home with 430-square-foot garage and ADU located at 171 Caleb Place, and Design 24009 for a new 1,977-square-foot two-story home with 445-square-foot garage and ADU located at 175 Caleb Place. The subject applications are similar in architecture as the previously reviewed applications, including designs that utilize farmhouse architecture with bearing architectural treatments in order to provide variation along the street frontage as well as all the other elevations. Each of the homes now include portions of the second story setback from the first to meet the objective design standards. As proposed, the new site plans meet all setback requirements for the front side and rear yard setbacks and are not requesting any variances or exceptions from the standards. Based on the revised application and the revised plans, the project now meets all interim objective design standards as well as all Brentwood Boulevard-specific plan standards and are in compliance with all state laws, including those related to accessory dwelling units. Overall, staff is supportive of the changes made to the homes and is recommending that the planning commission approve the subject applications, including Resolution 24-038 approving design review 24-008 for 171 Caleb Place, and Resolution 24-039 approving the design review 24-009 for 175 Caleb Place. And that concludes staff's report. We are available for any questions, and the applicant is also here to provide.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan. Are there any clarifying questions for Ms. Hagan? Commissioner Floyd? Commissioner Brand? Commissioner Smalley? Commissioner Johnson? There are none. Okay. Seeing none. At this time, the public is permitted to address the planning commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant, who will have 10 minutes. Does the applicant wish to address the commission? Good evening.
I guess the button's not working. Okay. So I had this big old speech prepared for you guys. But tonight, I want to just speak from my heart and speak in understanding the consensus of the community of Brentwood. Throughout this process that we've been designing, the entire project, we've heard a lot of commentary from, you know, the community, from you guys. We've gone back to the drawing board several times. Tonight, in hopes of a unanimous approval, we want everybody to be happy. We understand that not everyone is going to be jumping for joy about the project, but we care about what the community thinks and which is why we were very transparent from the very beginning when we initially came and submitted for the planning here at the city of Brentwood. So I wanted to thank Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Spaulding, for your approval the last time and your consensus. To Commissioner Flor, I simply wanted to let you know that I heard you the last time. I understand your position from a legality standpoint. We understand, you know, what this body's about. We understand, obviously, that you guys got a job to do on legalities, on approving projects. Obviously, that's the meaning of the board. So we heard you out the last time. It would mean a lot to myself and Steve. You would be on board with all this. We care about what you think as well. You know, Mr. Brand, Commissioner Brand, I've heard you say several times about the bulwark of the, the community, the standards, the design review standards, the interim standards of Brentwood. I got you. I understood you. And we get it. We understand what that's about as well. You guys want to maintain everything looking nice here in Brentwood, and you know, Brentwood's Brentwood. That's why, obviously, a lot of people move out here because it's beautiful. You know, so we understood that. Commissioner Roberts, the last time I, you know, I came up here, we were talking about inches, you know, from the design standard, you know, you specified you weren't an architect. You didn't understand kind of what was going on. We didn't cut back now inches. We came, you know, we cut out feet now. We've adjusted the square footage. We've lost an additional square footage of 40 to 60 square feet per house, 60 years, 65 square feet per house. But, you know, it's all, it all makes sense. But tonight, I want everybody to be conjoined with us and, you know, and I'm, you know, I'm excited about the project and, but I also want everybody to be cool with it and be happy with it. I don't know what the neighbors are going to say, you know, they have their own opinion, but, you know, that's pretty much what I have to say to you guys personally on a, on a level of, you know, business to business on it. So that's all I wanted to say to you guys.
I appreciate that. Are there any questions or comments that you have for the applicant at this time? I appreciate your honesty and I appreciate your candor.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. At this time, I'm going to open it up for, are there any, anyone on Zoom or anyone in the audience?
At this time, Chair Roberts, we have no speaker cards for those here in person. We'll go to Zoom, and my first speaker is Jana.
Hello, can you hear me, please?
We can hear you, Jana.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to thank the planning commission for all of the time and effort that they put into this project. It is deeply appreciated. I think these homes are too large for the size of a lot, and I have stated that each time we've held a meeting. I understand that the individuals are, I guess, are investors, and they want to put up the biggest house they possibly can to get the most money, and I guess that's what investors do. It is a nice neighborhood. It is a quiet neighborhood, at least our side of the street is. And to see these two moustrosities, and that's how I'm going to refer to them, go up is really heartbreaking to me. There's no reason to put the size of a home on there. Also, there's an existing fence, and I don't know if that fence intrudes into the Brentwood property, but I think Brentwood needs to look into that fence. I think maybe it was put up prematurely, I don't know. But that's something that I do want to bring to the attention of the planning commission. And really, that's, that's all I'm going to say at this point in time, and I do thank you for hearing me and for being there. Please have a good evening.
At this time, we have no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. I'll now close public comments. I'm looking for a motion?
No motion needed as this is not a public hearing.
I keep saying that, okay. Is there any discussion by the commissioners on this application? Commissioner Floyd?
The issue of strict adherence to the interim objective design standards isn't really one, in this particular case, of preservation of Brentwood being a nice city or anything like that. Although I wish I had the discretion to make findings based on that here, I do not. I do have discretion to make findings based on objective design review standards. It's what the state has left us with. We have objective design standards. I know not everybody went to the academy last year or was in the session I was in, but I understand why we have objective design standards. It's not going too far of the way to say that there's a gun to our head, and we have to maintain these objective design standards. And for the applicant, I understand the frustration you must be feeling to have to go through this. But for anyone that doesn't like objective design standards with no exceptions, I would refer you to your state assembly member and your state senator because that's who has imposed this standard upon us. And having said that, I really don't have anything else to add on this project at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brand?
I do applaud the applicant for bringing these plans into the compliance of the documents that we had highlighted in the last meeting. And it's, you know, I, I don't know much more about this fence that the resident was describing in the back. Maybe we can talk about that at some other point. But I think in this instance, it's a, you know, these two lots are so challenging to work with, you know, they're kind of goofy-shaped, and I think it took a lot of work to make that happen. And ultimately, I think it was, I think you've definitely moved in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
I just have one quick, couple of quick questions. I was doing some, what is the average size of the houses in that area?
I don't necessarily have that information with the average sizes, but I know they, some of the older homes are around 1,100 square feet, and they go up to a little over 2,000, I believe, but I don't know what the average is.
I was just looking on Zillow right now. It looks like there's a couple for 2,500 square feet, 2,300 square feet. The house looks like, it's right here. The house next door, why is my mouse not clicking right now? Looks like it's 2,600. Just was trying to get an idea of the size of the lots. Okay, the size of the homes, excuse me. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Smalley?
Jennifer, we spoke last time that these lots are legal lots that came into the city that were, what's the word I'm searching for?
Prior to annexation?
Yeah, annexation. Thank you. So the lots, while smaller, the legal lot, they're allowed to build one home unit per, on each legal lot?
That is correct.
What is the city's role in requiring what size house goes on those lots?
Some PDs have floor area ratios which limit the square footage. The specific planned development unit does not have any floor area ratios. So as long as the proposal meets all setback requirements, there is no maximum square footage for this planned development.
Okay. And Commissioner Johnson, 167 Caleb Place is 2624 square feet, 172 is 2524 square feet, 176 Caleb is 2524 square feet. So the lot may be a little bit smaller than those lots, but they're the same size houses that are two-story because there are certainly some single stories that are smaller than that, but they're single stories, which is why they're smaller. So I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
At this time, I have no, no comments at this time. I will say that I do appreciate all the effort that you've put in. I know you've had several iterations, and I thank you for understanding that the, some of the mandates that we are trying to keep, and I know you heard this the last time you came before us, making exceptions that will just go on and on and on, and trying to bring things into some form and balance. So thank you so much for working with us. At this time, I'm going to close public comment and look for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to adopt resolution number 24-038 approving the design, a design review 24-008 for a single-family home located at 171 Caleb Place. I also make a motion, do I got to do this one at a time or?
One at a time.
One at a time.
All in, oh, I'm looking for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number 24-039 approving a design review 24-009 for a new single-family home located at 175 Caleb Place.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Best to you. At this time, we'll move on to our conditional use permit for Siesta La Vie, Se La Vie, Wine and Tea located at 6,800 Lone Tree Way. And Ms. Sarah will give us a report.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairperson Roberts, and good evening, planning commission, members of the public. Before you tonight is a conditional use permit, CUP 24-006, to establish a 3,750-square-foot restaurant and cafe known as Se La Vie Cafe, excuse me, Se La Vie Coffee, Wine and Tea to be located within Building E of the Lone Tree Crossing Shopping Center located at 6,800 Lone Tree Way. The Lone Tree Crossing Shopping Center consists of nine parcels, which have slowly been developed over the years. The subject parcel was recently, or was recently constructed and finalized in 2023. The other roughly half of the building is currently occupied by the Lone Tree Animal Care. The project site has a general plan designation of general commercial, which allows for a variety of mixed commercial uses and service-type businesses that serve specific areas of the city and neighborhoods that closely are located near arterial intersections. The proposed use is consistent with various goals, policies of the general plan, which are explained more in detail in the staff report. The site is zoned Plan Development 38, SubArea E, which is intended to allow a mix of general commercial and regional commercial uses. Restaurant, cafes, and other food service uses are permitted within the subarea with the caveat that they occupy 15% of the floor area or less of the building. Restaurants and cafes such as these that are, that do occupy more than 15% of the floor area are required to obtain a conditional use permit. In this case, since the cafe proposes to occupy approximately 50% of the building and proposes to sell alcohol, beer, and wine, host live entertainment, ACUP is therefore required in this case. The building is located on the southwest corner of the Lone Tree Crossings Development and is accessed through the two existing driveways on, off of Lone Tree Way. The building, site, and parking are existing and recently constructed. in compliance with current regulations. No modifications are proposed to the site or the building. The applicant proposes to establish a restaurant-cafe venue, which would serve beer and wine, host live entertainment and occupy 3,750 square feet of the 7,511-square-foot building. The applicant proposes to host events such as live music nights, comedy shows, art exhibit-themed events and book signings, to name a few, and intends to focus on local, national and international-known artists and entertainers. The cafe will consist of a bar and cold kitchen to prep the food items. While the cafe intends to cater towards hosting events, they will still operate daily regardless of whether an event is scheduled. The proposed hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., Sunday through Thursday, and are proposed to stay open until 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. The estimated capacity of the restaurant would be between 75 and 90 people, subject to the building codes and fire codes. Given this information and the staff report, as well as tonight's presentation demonstrating consistency with the general plan, zoning and sequel exemptions, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 24-042 approving conditional use permit Number 24-006. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions at this time.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any clarifying questions for the, for staff? Commissioner Floyd? Commissioner Brand? Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Smalling?
Can I get the, I think you said three? There are three things that we're voting on tonight. Are any exceptions or variances?
No exceptions or variances. You're voting on the conditional use permit for the square footage, conditional use permit for the entertainment or live entertainment use, and then conditional use permit for beer and wine sales.
Okay.
Okay, very good. All right. At this time, the public is permitted to address the Planning Commission. Remarks are limited to five minutes per person, except for the applicant, who will have 10. Does the applicant wish to address the commission?
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm going to try to bring this down a little bit. There we go. I'm not as tall as the other guy. He was a big guy. My name's Michael Pearson. I am a resident of Brentwood. I've been here in this area about a decade, a little over a decade. And I'm a business owner, own another business. Unfortunately, it's not in Brentwood. It's in Antioch. I've owned various businesses. And this is really a purely selfish venture. This is, I'm tired of going to San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, Sacramento for live entertainment. I would like to have a nice evening with my wife, with friends, and we can sit down and we can have a nice evening of live entertainment. We don't have to go to Tommy T's to see some comedy. We don't have to go to Yoshi's in Oakland and get our car broken into to see some live entertainment or listen to a little music. We don't have to drive all the way to Napa to go see the murder mystery or get on the murder mystery train. We can do that right here in Brentwood. Brentwood is lacking entertainment. I love the Axe, the Els and Axe, I forgot the name of it, but that place is wonderful. I've taken my family there. And that's a step in the right direction. I think the more things we can do here, the less commute we have to do. I think it's better for Brentwood residents. So what we're trying to do here is just a very upscale, nice, very, I, I saw the CUP, the staff recommendation that was like, no adult entertainment. I'm like, I'm a church-going person. I don't do the adult entertainment thing. So, no fears of us doing any strip shows or any kind of live entertainment like that. We're just purely class. Se La Vie, the way of life, that's life. And that's the type of entertainment we like to bring here. And it'll be something different every time. We have a lot of experience in throwing custom events, custom-themed parties. I've thrown 1920's parties with hundreds of people. I've thrown murder mysteries. I've thrown concerts in arenas. So I have a lot of experience throwing experiences, not just shows. So I want to bring experience, an experience to Brentwood. I'm open for any kind of questions that the commissioners may, the commissioners may have to, to explain things or anything the public may have.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Floyd? Commissioner Brand? Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Smalling?
There's no questions, I have one shot. So, because of the alcohol permit, right? That's my main area of concern. I, I was there today and there is a, I'm going to say the name wrong. I was going to say Baby Yoda, but that's not the right, that's not the right name. I know it's a little bit further down the parking lot. I think it's like, I did the math. I think it's like 600 feet from that. What time, what, and I know it's both tea and, I'm not sure what type of tea it might, it's going to be, but, and out, and beer and wine, right? What, what is the intention in terms of what time is your, that you'll be serving alcohol?
Typically, the alcohol will be served for evening events. It, it's going to be just wine and teas and, excuse me, it's Se La Vie Coffee, Wine and Tea. So we're not going to use the whole name. So everyone's not going to have to say the whole name all the time. But it will be, it will be different blends of coffees. And we, I just got back from Belgium and London yesterday and found a nice London tea shop that we're going to be ordering some different tea blends from. It's going to be various coffees from all over the world. It's going to be a lot of beverages in the food to kind of, to go along with it. So far as the alcohol, we're not trying to do hard alcohol or spirits. It's, you know, no different than going to one of the local wineries and having a glass or hanging out at one of the local wineries. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you, so you, you believe the majority of the alcohol sales will happen after 5 o'clock?
I do believe that that's going to happen. I'm not sure about the lunch hour thing because I, I anticipate people will come for lunch if they just want a relaxing lunch and want to sit. And I hope, you know, most people don't drink and go back to work, but, but they may want to come have a glass and go back to work. But I don't anticipate a crowd because the live entertainment really should be happening in the evening hours. There may be a, you know, a solo artist or something during the daytime just for the ambiance, the background music.
But you do want the ability to sell alcohol at lunch if people want it?
Yes.
That's part of your request?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, and I believe within the complex, there's a, there's another restaurant. There's a couple of facilities that already sell beer and wine and I actually believe hard alcohol over there in that area in that plaza.
Okay, so you just want to be treated the same way as an existing restaurant? In that, in that same area?
Yes, I, I would say yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, how exciting is this? This is very exciting because I'm anticipating that there is going to be a lot of great entertainment finally coming to Brentwood. And we don't have to go to SF Jazz or Yoshi's or Napa, that you're going to bring that to us. So that is really a real leveling up, if you will. And it sounds like you're going to be presenting various coffees and teas from around the world, Mr. World Traveler. So that's, that's really good, too. So it's, it is really a leveling up for the city of Brentwood. And these are the types of things we want in Brentwood. So I, it's a comment. I have no questions. I just wanted to say thank you. And with that, I'll open it up for public comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have no speaker cards for those here in chambers. We'll go to Zoom. Anyone have any questions or public comments? Please raise your hand now. We have no hands raised.
Okay, very good. Well, at this time, I will close public comments and ask the commission if they have any further discussion on this item. Commissioner Floyd?
Through the chair. This is a public hearing, so we will need a motion to close.
I can do that.
Pull it together. I'm looking for a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. It passes. Okay, so let's have a discussion. Commissioner Floyd?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have too much to say here. It looks like a, a nice, nice place to put this. It's a appropriate place to put it. I haven't heard any complaints from the community. It's on a large thoroughfare. There's a lot of traffic there already. So this is kind of an example of, of something that, that we probably would like to see to come into the city. And yeah, I, I really don't have any reservations about this.
Thank you. Commissioner Brand?
Yeah, duly noted on the introduction of more variety of establishments in Brentwood, especially not having to potentially drive 50-plus miles in either direction. The, appreciate Vice Chair Smalling commenting on the 600-feet ABC. I did reach out to Cornerstone and Coventry, or, sorry, what is, what were they called? Anyway, they did not respond to me for comment with regards to their opinion on this particular project. So I wanted to make sure that that, some of the more sensitive establishments might not feel any impact and they did not respond. And so I'll have to take their silence as agreement. But I think, let's see. Yeah, because I think Covenant is 575 and the other one was 623 feet, something like that, at least from GIS that I'd read. I like the idea a lot. I think the variety of, of entertainment and different, you know, beverage options. It's a great idea. I did want to open the discussion regarding hours. We have six establishments that I could count and I'm open to the idea of there being more. I'm not sure. Winco, Denny's, the Two Hookah Lounges, 311 and Tailgaters. Those are the only places in Brentwood open beyond 1:00 or beyond on any day of the week that I could find. I could be wrong, but I did think that even places like the Emporium close at midnight. And I think that that might be a more appropriate closing time because it's Friday and Saturday, they're looking for 1:00. I don't know if there's a, a specific discussion with regards to one, the justification for one, an extra hour on Friday and Saturday, but certainly open to that discussion, yeah.
I don't anticipate being open to 1:00. But for the caliber of the artists that we're going to bring here, I have to do multiple shows in a day. I have to stack the shows. These artists are very expensive. A lot of these artists we may just break even on. We're not going to make any money on. It's just the, the national artists that we're playing, our international artists that we're planning on bringing, we would have to have multiple shows. So we may have to run two or three shows on a Friday or Saturday night to make it make sense. So that would be the only, it's just really a contingency, emergency valve. But I, I think for staffing, we're trying to keep the staffing costs down for that number of hours. So I don't want to be open to one, but just on those nights where we have a special artist or a special event, where we have to stack those shows just to make it make financial sense, that, that would be my only thing about the 1:00. But I'm, I'm, staff recommended that we cut off live music and live amplified sound at midnight. And I'm, I'm okay with staff's recommendation. We may have to start shows a little earlier, but I was a little concerned about the commuters, people who commute back from Brentwood and what time of a show would they be able to get if we start a 6:00 show? Or typically, these shows start at 7:00. You have a 7:00 and a 10:00 show. Like, they kind of space things out a little bit. So that was the only reason why I had included the 1:00 a.m. on there.
So like a matinee and then a mid-show and then evening show and then amplified music by midnight and then a wrap-up beyond midnight?
I would like for people to be headed out.
A nightcap and a closing, the closing act or check, yeah.
It, it would, it would be purely, let's say we get a national or a nationally-known comedian. They typically run a set of about 90 minutes. And you got to give people time to get in and out. So we're looking at a two-hour window per show. I may, I might have to run three shows on a day, but typically, I'm going to have, definitely have to run two shows back-to-back. And I don't want to rush people out. Okay, you just saw them, get out of here. Bye, leave. I want a little cushion there so that people that can't make the early shows, the commuters who can't make an earlier show, that they'll be able to attend. So that's, that's kind of the, the reason why we were looking for that. But we did plan for things to be wrapped up a little bit earlier. In fact, on most nights, we're probably going to be wrapped up by 10:00, 9:00.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
Commissioner Johnson?
Basically, based on what you just said, 1:00 is kind of just to ensure that people can get in and out on time and make sure that you can be profitable on those nights when you're bringing big stars in? Is that the deal?
That's, that's exactly it. And, and not even profitable, not losing money because.
So maintain break even?
This entertainment, break even. These entertainers that we plan on bringing are, they're going to be special.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smalling?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I don't want to get too much into your business model because it's not her role. But your plan is to break even on, and it goes to 1:00 versus 12, right? So you're planning on your entertainment, you hope to make some money on the entertainment, but you're going to, you're fine with breaking even from what it sounds like? That's why you need the 1:00 hour?
Yeah, let me clarify.
Okay.
That's not the regular model. That's for the special people we bring in. We're not going to, I'm not going to be able to afford to bring in special people on a regular basis.
Yeah, and most of the entertainment like that would be on Friday, Saturday nights, which is why you're asking for 1:00.
Absolutely.
I assume so, but just wanted to have you say it.
Yes.
And so then, so you, basically where you're going to make, you know, hope to make and do very well, obviously, is in the food and beverage sales.
Absolutely, because the number of people that we, we're going to be able to get into this, you know, I, I'm not sure what the fire marshal's going to come back with, but I, I think just the number, I mean, we would have to be almost double that size or triple that size.
Yeah.
To, to see profits, but.
So we don't have a lot of places like this in Brentwood today? And I guess I should have asked you this before, so I apologize. Do we run this by the police department for security? And they're, they're okay with?
Yeah, I received some conditions of approval from them, similar to the one that he mentioned about the closing time, or the music ceasing by midnight. So they have weighed in. They've provided conditions of approval and they're included.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think the 1:00, you know, when I, I don't have any more questions for you if, unless someone else does. That way you're not going back and, back and forth?
I, I, I understand how this works because we travel. We, we go to concerts. We go to clubs. We go to, listen to shows. And when shows end, folks want to stop at the powder room. Folks are moving slowly. Folks are talking about the, what they've just experienced. So no, you don't want to rush them out. Plus, you're charging people. And you, you have to make sure that that charge is equivalent to courtesy, right? You, you will never get me back into a place if you're ushering me out quickly. You know, I want to be able to leave out comfortably the way I came in. So I am 100% behind you on that. If, let me just recap so I understand. During the week, they're probably, you'll probably fold up early, but you still have that leverage if, if something comes through that's special. And on the weekend, the hope is to have something special come in and you'll be stacking your entertainment so that folks can see either an 8:00 show or a 10:00 show or whatever that number, that, that clock time is.
Correct.
And they'll be able to eat and have a, a glass of wine and enjoy entertainment. So I, I think that I get it and I understand. And the 1:00 is just there to kind of make sure that folks aren't rushing out, being pushed out, handicapped people included, so that, you know, they, they leave out the way they came in comfortably and with ease. So I, I think I got that right.
Yes, you, that's absolutely correct. In addition, I do have significant relationships in the entertainment industry. I would like for the artists, since they've traveled all the way, they're not going to, there's no hotels that we can put them up locally, not yet, until Lazy Dog get this thing taken care of. I would like for them to kind of hang out. I would like for them to kind of hang out and mix and mingle. So I think that most of the time, regular people don't get a chance to interact with artists. So after they performed, have a little time to be able to mix and mingle.
Yeah, I see that at Yoshi's, where, where they come out from behind the stage and, and, or from the, from the stage, and they mix and mingle, and they take photographs and all of that. So yeah, that's, that's the class act, and I appreciate it. So that being said, are there any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Went on a little bit. Do we have a couple of public comments?
We already did.
I've already done that.
We're in, yeah, commission discussion.
Okay, so commission, commission discussion. Commissioner Floyd?
Yeah, I stand by my other comments.
Commissioner Bran?
I think the applicant has convinced me.
Very good, very good. Commissioner Johnson?
No comments at this time.
And Commissioner Smalling?
The only, I guess, is a question for Christie, is consistency around previous rulings within the council. I know the council is working on new zoning requirements. I know alcohol is a specific one. And I would say that recently, there was, or not recently, I don't know, 18 months ago, there was a decision that the Planning Commission went one way on approval for an ABC permit, and the council went a different way based on distance to a, to a youth, a youth education center. I'm not sure what the, Akitty Academy, I think, is the name of the, of the business, right? And it was, you know, different distance, but just want to make sure that since that ABC permit was denied, that from a precedent standpoint, I know each project is supposed to stand on its own, but just this is, we don't get a lot of ABC permits at the Planning Commission, or at least in the four years that I've been here, so just want to make sure that we're not, we're following the right procedure and consistency and does precedent matter from a distance perspective? Because there is, today, there isn't a direct one that would give us reason to decline this, but just want to make sure that we're, there are the ABC part of it, but just want to make sure we're following the proper protocols.
I understand your question, and I appreciate your attention to kind of previous actions. And I think I'll say what I said last time, which is each conditional use permit is a snowflake, and we look at it in the abstract. There is no precedent for conditional use permits. So if you can't make the findings for this particular project, then you would, you know, so state. But if you can make the findings, then you can also so-state. So you may end up with, you know, ABC permits or conditional use permits that allow, would allow alcohol, you know, in circumstances that are closer to some sensitive use, in one case, and not quite as close another. And for whatever reason, the commission, you know, can find, based on the facts and circumstances and substantial evidence before them, that one is appropriate and one is not. So as long as you can make the findings this evening, then, you know, you're welcome to approve regardless of any kind of past action that you've taken.
Okay, thank you. In terms of, Commissioner Bran, in terms of the hours, I think 1 o'clock. When I looked at, I just did the, make sure I did the math right before. The closest home is, I think, 145 yards from, from the.
Almost 300 feet, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's significant, right? So it, and it's, it's inside, so I think from a 1 o'clock standpoint, I think we, we need to give businesses their best availab, their best ability to be competitive within the market, and by allowing hours of 1 o'clock, especially on Friday and Saturday, I think that, especially the type of business that this is, I think that, from my perspective, it makes a lot of sense, and if it was closer to a home, that would be different, but it's not. And looking at just from a driving out of the parking lot, you're not going to be, you know, if something unfortunate were to happen, there's, you know, it, it looks like it's, from an egress standpoint, it looks like it's fine as well. So I'm, I think that from a distance standpoint, it's fine for, you know, for, for 1 o'clock. And it's only, it's on Friday and Saturday, and maybe not even every Friday, Saturday.
Okay, very good. I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-042, approving conditional use permit Number 24-006, subject to certain findings and conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Our next item is focused zoning code update related to the regulations for auto service stations, gas stations, car washes, and short-term rentals. And Ms. Hagan will give us the report.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, we're here to discuss the city's focused zoning code update, specifically regulations related to automobile service stations or gas stations, car washes, and short-term rentals. In January of 2023, the City Council provided direction on reinitiating the city's zoning code update, and it included new focused and phased approach. The City Council further gave direction on uses to be considered as part of the update and directed staff to present those to LUD for initial framework for each of the topics. The six initial identified topics included automobile service stations, car washes, alcohol regulations, self-service facility, self-sewage facilities, short-term rentals, and drive-through uses. Each of these items were presented to the Land Use and Development Committee to get direction before moving forward with draft and code amendments. Based on LUD direction, staff is presenting these updates before you tonight. And for tonight's presentation and topics, I'm going to pass off the presentation to our consultant Perry Banner from De novo Planning Group, who's joining us via Zoom tonight. And Perry, along with planning staff, will be available to discuss and answer any questions at the end of the presentation.
If you could bear with me for just one second as I get the slideshow started. There we go. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, it's great to be with you tonight, even virtually. As Jennifer sort of alluded to, this project, this focused zoning code update project is part of a larger project that'll see not just this set of focused zoning code amendments, but, but three other topical areas coming to Planning Commission's way. Also, we'll be addressing some amendments related to state law and the housing element implementation, and also some objective design standards. So this will likely be the first of a few times that I get to see the Planning Commission. So with regard to the topical areas that you have before you tonight, I'll just start by saying that earlier this summer, in July, June and July, staff presented to the Land Use and Development Committee six topical areas. We got clear direction on automobile service stations, car washes, and short-term rental regulations. The other three will be coming in the near future, and there was one that was already mentioned with regard to alcohol sales. So these are topical areas that the Planning Commission can look forward to. But for tonight, going to sort of break this up into two parts. I'm going to combine automobile service stations or gas stations and car washes, and then we'll address short-term rentals. So first, with regard to automobile service stations and car washes, as I indicated, staff made a presentation to, to LUD, and LUD took into consideration the existing regulations that are currently in the Brentwood Municipal Code, looked at potential other operational regulations and development standards related to these uses. LUD also considered whether Brentwood is, is already adequately served by existing car washes and existing gas stations. And it looked to the future to, you know, as the city becomes built out, and there are fewer vacant sites, wanted to make sure that, that there is developable land for, for uses that the city wants to, envisions having in the future. So in its, in its assessments, LUD looked at whether automobile service stations and car washes were potentially the highest and best use of remaining vacant land. And LUD also looked at the impacts that these uses typically have on surrounding residential neighborhoods, impacts such as noise, traffic, odors, hazardous materials, et cetera. To give you a sense of just how many car washes and gas stations are currently operating in the city, there are 18 automobile service stations. They're indicated in yellow on the map, and 14 car washes indicated in blue. And you can kind of see that these uses are all kind of concentrated on the city's major thoroughfares. So something else that, that LUD considered was the, the trend in some other Bay Area cities, where these cities are adopting ordinances to help reduce GHG emissions by prohibiting new fossil fuel-related service stations, or not allowing those pumps in their cities any longer. Based on all of this information that, that LUD took into consideration, and they looked at existing facilities within the city, the amount of available land, and really wanted to put forward an effort to de-emphasize fossil fuels and autocentric uses. They went on to, LUD's recommendation is that future fossil fuel service stations and car washes should be prohibited in the city. Now, what LUD wanted to do was make the, the sort of a distinction between gasoline service stations, though, and, and service stations that would provide alternative fuel or electric vehicle charging stations. So LUD's recommendation is that although new gasoline service stations and car washes be prohibited, that alternative fueling stations and electric vehicle charging stations be allowed to continue in the city. Just moving on to short-term rentals now, and just kind of switching gears, I think that by now, the Planning Commission, the, the people in, you know, that are, they're viewing the show right now, everyone should be aware of what an Airbnb is or what a VRBO is. But just so that we're all clear, that Airbnb or a short-term rental is essentially a residential property that's rented for a brief duration, typically less than 30 days, but more likely a night, a weekend, a week stay. And this can consist of someone renting a room in their, in their unit or renting out an entire house. Now, when they first came online about 12 or 15 years ago, short-term rentals caught most jurisdictions off guard, because there wasn't a way in, in the municipal code, for example, to regulate these uses. The Brentwood Municipal Code, for example, it prohibits short-term rentals that are constructed, converted, or developed through the use of two-unit housing development provisions or through the use of urban lot split provisions. But this is related to new legislation that has come through recently, and so there are some gaps in the municipal code as far as how to regulate short-term rentals. This, the Brentwood Municipal Code does, in fact, allow kind of your traditional rooming and boarding for not less than 30 days at a time. But unless the short-term rental is, unless these short-term rentals are explicitly defined and/or prohibited in the municipal code, then a, then an STR, or rather, unless an STR qualifies as, as rooming and boarding, then it would be prohibited. So what the, sorry. So what the, what LUD chose to consider is that based on, based on the direction that the city should go in, LUD had determined that short-term rentals should be a prohibited use in the city, and they wanted to clearly define what a short-term rental was. And one of the trends that is going on as well is that not only are individuals renting out their house as a short-term rental, but there's somewhat of a trend to rent out your swimming pool, your tennis court, your backyard for these types of uses, and it's kind of representing a commercialization of residential areas. So what LUD did was recommend a clear definition for short-term rentals, and then to go on to explicitly state that short-term rentals would be a prohibited use in the city. So with that, it is recommended that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 24-041, recommending that the City Council adopt an ordinance amending the Brentwood Municipal Code to prohibit new automobile service stations and car washes and replace with alternative fuel stations and electric vehicle charging stations in all zones throughout the city. Add new land use classification in Section 17.030, that point 030 definitions for alternative fuel stations and electric vehicle charging stations, and update Chapter 17.796, short-term rentals, to clearly define and prohibit short-term rentals. With that, I'll end the presentation, and Jennifer and I, I think, can take any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Well, thank you very much. Are there clarifying questions for the presenter, Commissioner Floyd?
Thank you, Chair Roberts. Yes, sir. I, oh, you're, you're on the screen. I'm just going to look forward, and I can see you there. Yeah, yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first is more of an observation. Most of the alternative fuels that are listed here, that list looks like it was pretty much constructed, constructed with the help of the fossil fuel industry. I think in government, sometimes we, we see some things that are unintentionally hilarious. It's, it's pretty bad. Most of those things are not great in terms of reducing greenhouse gases. And having said that, I don't, and I, I applaud the, the City Council for having concerns about greenhouse gases, but I think in the city, what people are really concerned about is stations, gas stations, you know? It's this thing on the corner, and you got the pumps, and you got the, the little building, and you, you got the cars going. And most of these things are actual station stations. And so, you know, I don't know that we're going to ever see a hydrogen station, much less a coal-sen fuel, you know, God forbid. But, so I won't press the point too hard, but I just don't think they belong on this list. But what I really do want to talk about is EV charging for a minute, because it looks like we're defining EV chargers as being stations. And in the, for the most part, they're not. For the most part, what EV charging is, are some parking spaces that have been equipped with a dispenser, and then maybe off to the side, there's some, you know, large, fairly large electrical equipment. There's, there's no building. There's no attendant. There's a, there's, it's just, you know, set up next to a supermarket. In fact, we just had eight EV Go dispensers go in right next to a Rayleigh's. And I don't remember, I don't recall, did we do a CUP for that EV Go? Is that a station? Would that, under this, now, this new rule, would we all, all of a sudden be creating something called an EV charger station that needed a CUP? Or would it just, is there a clarification that an EV charger station would be a standalone station of some sort with chargers as opposed to chargers that are put in a parking lot?
Chargers that are put in a parking, they are required by state law to be administratively approved if they are smaller units. I think what we are trying to define here and cover are larger, similar to gas stations, larger actual whole entire developments, and is what we would cover here. But what you saw that went in next to Rayleigh's is something that is administratively approved and goes directly to the building permit for permits.
And so even, like, the 16 chargers over behind streets, that's the same thing? And, okay, I just didn't see language in there, so I wasn't really sure that we weren't creating something called an EV charging station. It's, I, I think, I've been driving an electric car now for three or four years, and I've only ever seen one thing down in Kettlemann City that would, would actually qualify as any kind of a station. It's really just, you know, so, okay, that, that was, that was me splitting hairs. But yeah, that, I, I would prefer not to have these other alternative fuels in there, but I'm not going to, you know, make a hard point on it. Thanks.
Commissioner Bran?
So by removing this languaging, I guess I'm, it seems as though that even if a applicant wanted to open, if this were approved, even if an applicant wanted to open a gas station, they could not even via a CUP. Is that, is that a fair?
Correct. They would need to request a specific, or a zoning rezon, rezone text amendment in order to add it back in. So while this isn't permanent, it, it would require some type of legislative action that required to go to Planning Commission in order to allow it. A CUP would not be an allowable avenue for that at this time.
So you described possibly as like a substantial lift in order to make that happen?
Okay, correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson?
So, just out of curiosity, how, I read somewhere, I think in the general plan, we're gonna go to about eighty thousand people or so, eighty thousand. What happens with growth or, God forbid, the, our elections change the direction of EV cars, electric powered vehicles? What happens when we reach that was, when we reach that kind of number in terms of gasoline?
Yeah, so this was something that was discussed at at the LUD meeting. This is something that we discussed that we believe fits our current conditions and our current kind of situation. As you know, we do have approvals for forty-some pumps coming in at the new Costco station on the opposite side of the Highway Four, as well as all of our current stations. And so while we, through this amendment, would be currently prohibiting them, there is nothing in this that would preclude if conditions change, if economic, you know, conditions were ripe for something else or if new trends became, you know, flourished or came about. The city council and the planning commission at that time could reconsider specific, site-specific allowances to allow them where appropriate. So this is thought to currently cover our certain, our current and our near-term situation. But obviously, we we don't have a crystal ball, it might not cover our needs forever. But at this time, staff is comfortable with this moving forward to cover our current situation and current economic climate.
And why not just approve them as they come apart, like as they come up? Why not, why ban them instead of approving them as they come or declining them as they come?
I think it was within the agenda staff report, we had our background reports. And part of the discussion came about on whether this, whether gas stations and service stations really were the best use for our limited vacant land. And while that would be one option to continue just allowing them through the conditional use permit process, allowing them through the conditional process gives a little more hope or opportunity in which, at this time, it was recommended that it is not something that really we wanted to move forward with. And so at this time, it was recommended that we eliminate the uses from our code in order to have greater opportunities for other uses that may be more needed throughout the city.
And so going back to the first question, you about the eighty thousand, you know, so if you're eliminating uses and you're stuck with the amount of service stations you have, then we might be forcing greater impact on our residents when it comes to getting fuel in the future at some given point in time because we don't have no any more flexibility?
That is always a potential.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smalley?
We're still on clarifying questions, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thanks. So, Jennifer, what happens if a current, I'm, I believe I know the answers, but I just want to make sure. If someone who owns a service station today or a car wash decides to sell, that's, they would be allowed to sell their existing business to somebody else under the way it's written today?
Correct.
And then for, because this also, we've, I think most of the questions have been around stations and car washes. No one's asked about the Airbnb and Verbo? Yeah, well, it's clarifying questions, right? So how do we, do we have a good idea of how we even enforce that today? Or would enforce it, I guess, because that's, you know, there's six up right now, and I, I can't figure out the addresses. I'm sure someone better at it could, but I can't.
We have very good detectives on our team. But yes, currently, we we operate mostly off of complaint basis. We do frequently get complaints from neighbors who have rentals next door who might have impacts. So our our first direct line is is through complaints. But we do also proactively search those sites on periodic basis. Our staff is very familiar, so typically, they provide pictures of the home or the neighborhood. And it isn't as difficult to kind of narrow down neighborhoods or figure out sometimes where they are located. And then there's the frequent flyers that, you know, once you're up, we, you know, go and proactively contact them and and you may see them a couple months later. And so those obviously are easier to investigate. But it is not a sure way to do it. But through this as well, each of those websites do allow cities, once we do definitively define them, we can always send that information to those as well who aren't required by law to prohibit them, but but also play some type of role.
Good. So regarding the Commissioner Flores' question about EV stations, right? So I I think you're, Target is probably the best example of an EV station, right? Target adopted that early on, but there's, so today, that's not a typical model. But this, under how it's currently written, if someone decided to put in and invest in an EV station that looks exactly like a gas station today, except it's electric chargers, that would be allowed today, and if they come up with some creative business model to entertain people while they're in there, that would be allowed under the the way it's currently written?
The way it's
Well, the way that's proposed, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. So is that how, okay, that's not a clarifying question, that's all I have for now.
Okay, great. Okay, well, at this time, let's see. We are gonna open up public hearing?
At this time, we have no speaker cards for those here in person. For those on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand now. We have no hands raised.
Okay, very good. Okay. Well, at this time, we will, do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's have a discussion, commissioners. Commissioner Floyd?
Sure. I would, if the the commission is so inclined, I would strike most of the so-called alternative fuels from the list of alternative fuels. We'd have to strike the language it says as defined by whatever government organization it is. But I don't, I don't see why we need to necessarily allow, you know, coal-scent fuel, E85 or anything else that that burns and makes carbon. Or in the case of hydrogen, the the CO2 is released in the production of the carbon during methane reformation. But I'm not gonna, I I won't try to sway anybody, I I know it's kind of a something that a lot of people just aren't aware of. And I don't think that we're gonna see a lot of anybody trying to set one of those up anyway because there's not any vehicles to use the the fuel. I do, I am clarified that that EV chargers can be set up administratively by staff, so I'm I'm satisfied with that. An EV charging station is something that you will find from time to time, and I wouldn't be too opposed to it. But I do think that that it's good that there's CUPs because people might object to them for the same reason they object to gas stations, which has nothing to do with greenhouse gases. Let's see, on the car washes, I have nothing. On the short-term rentals, yeah, I I understand exactly what the the problem is with short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods, you know? They can often be turned into party houses, you know, people just don't behave well in them. And, you know, granted, a hotel or something like that, you get bad behavior, but it's not in the middle of somebody's neighborhood. So I'm I'm absolutely supportive of that as well. So in general, I'm in support of all of this, thanks.
Commissioner Brand?
Few comments, we'll start with gas stations. I took this because I genuinely didn't know what the impact on our community might be. And to me, I I was like, thinking about it, thinking, okay, we've got eighteen gas stations with the nineteenth on the way at Costco, which I think is supposed to have like sixteen or some
Forty.
Forty pumps. Yeah, a lot of pumps, anyway. I wanted to check that the demand was sufficient based off of what the existing infrastructure supports. Couple stats I just wanted to throw out is that in Contra Costa County, one in four vehicles that's new, that's light duty, sold in 2022 was electric. In 2023, one in three vehicles sold that's new in Contra Costa County was electric. So it's somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-two, thirty-three percent of every new vehicle. Now, we all don't own new vehicles, right? Myself included. There's fifty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-two light-duty vehicles registered in nine four five one three. Twenty-five hundred, two thousand five hundred and forty-nine of those are battery-electric vehicles, it's about five percent. To Commissioner Flores' point, actually, there's actually slightly more alternative fuel vehicles, if you believe it. You know, that's everything from E85 to, what's the other one called? Not not including diesel, but, you know, natural gas and and things of that nature, those are similar. So about five percent of the total. You know, fifteen thousand five hundred and seven are model year 2010 or older. So we have a substantial population of vehicles that are in that, I'll call it, older cohort. What this tells me is that when you break down the the vehicles that Brentwood residents drive in particular, if you're to assume that a typical Brentwood resident follows what we have defined as our VMT, right? It's about twenty-seven point nine miles per day. You can break that down across all of our model years based off of CAFE standards from every single year, right? Kind of a goofy intellectual exercise, but I found it surprisingly entertaining. Gets us to two hundred eighty thousand gallons of fuel per week used by Brentwood residents if every single Brentwood resident were to fill up their car every time in Brentwood. And across eighteen gas stations, essentially, I'll vary the semantics, but it gets us to about a hundred and forty-eight fill-ups per day, assuming that a typical gas tank is fifteen gallons, right? When you spread that across, let's say, the average, you know, fuel station has about twelve, maybe less, pumps, you know, one of these pumps can handle somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, four cars per hour. So you do the math, and it just kind of squanders the the totals that we have. So even if, even if we see an increase in population, what we're seeing is that overall substantially gas vehicles are dwindling in population as being, you know, replaced by electric and potentially alternative fuels. I personally don't like that, but that's the reality. So given, given that, I I frankly agree with that. Moving on to car washes, I spoke at length with a very good friend of mine who's a car wash maintenance tech, and he works on, well, he said, seven of twelve of the automated ones in Brentwood specifically, many of which can handle anywhere from fifty to a hundred cars per hour if stacked appropriately from a throughput standpoint. Now, ballpark, even with a conservative hourly rate, like you're talking fourteen thousand car washes a day that they can handle right now. And I can't imagine that one in three Brentwood residents is washing their car on a daily basis. So, you know, it it seems as though we have the support, you know, barring, you know, if you had a nicer vehicle and wanted to go to Brentwood Auto Spa or something like that, have a hand wash. So in in this case, I think it's, I think it's fair that, you know, we we want to institute a thing of this nature. The STRs thing, what does it do? It does a couple of things. We all remember what happened over off of O'Hara and Adams Lane, well, just slightly north of there, where we had the shooting after that pool party, that was like specifically an example of a rental that essentially there's, there was a conflict outside, a gentleman was jumped by two guys, he shot them both. And we had two fatalities, or I think one died, anyway, whatever. It doesn't sit well with me that we might allow something of that nature. Yes, that is a sort of extreme example, however, that's right down the street from me. And I scared the heck out of me when I heard that they were gonna land helicopters down at Blue Goose Park, which is right across the street, to air-vac somebody out. So it also creates an artificial housing scarcity, right? Because what you're doing is you're you're allotting these homes for rentals, not allowing permanent tenants to live there or future homeowners that might be able to do that. We all talk about the housing scarcity that we potentially have in our city. You know, we want to do everything to prevent that type of thing from taking place. And so STRs are what I would consider to be a low-hanging fruit example of something that just doesn't, we don't need it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Okay. That was impressive, I gotta give it to, that that I, I, that number breakdown stuff was pretty good. I'm gonna talk about the STRs for a second, just for a second. So although I totally understand about the, you know, the shooting, that I don't want to attribute that to an STR because, you know, shootings can happen, somebody can throw a party, and a shooting can happen, it could happen because, you know, parents are away and teenagers gone wild, so to speak, or I try not to attribute that. I guess what I'm thinking is if we want to, most of the times when we, when I think of STRs, I'm thinking of tourist areas, nine, you know, eighty, ninety percent of the time. And if we wanted to have an agro-tourism sector and we wanted to have, if we wanted to have certain things like that, we might need that kind of additional support with STRs so that people could, you know, visit various places in the city. I don't, I think that the housing issue of removing housing, since I really don't know if somebody who has an STR rents it out three hundred sixty-five days or they rented out, you know, when they went away on vacation or, so I don't know if it really takes, you know, housing off the market, because I could go away on vacation and they rent out my house during that period of time and come back home and the clients are gone. So I I always, I always hesitate with bands. Bands always just, I always like more flexibility in the way we operate, just makes, I don't know, it just makes life a little easier. Bands are always a little concerning because you have unintended consequences. So one of the reasons I would think that we want to re, or consider how we do this is because, A, we don't know what we're gonna need in the future. I know we have lazy doggers trying to bring in another hotel, which would be good, that, you know, might want to support Brentwood's future development or Brentwood's agro-tourism or having, you know, space for people to come and stay so they can see the entertainment or something, so that's really good. I don't know that when we have incidences of crime, that where the people are staying is really the cause because we have crime, you know, we we have crime in people who have houses. And so that's a problem. I think the other thing is it just doesn't lend itself to property rights ownership, like, you know, people having the ability to rent out their property. So I don't know, I'm I'm a little concerned about it. I understand there have been some issues, like you mentioned, that would be kind of scary to me, you know, very scary. So I'm a little, I, I don't like doing that kind of thing, I'm, but I understand it. The other thing that I wanted to just go back to the I, the the gas station. So that was really compelling evidence, I gotta say. So as time goes on, I don't know what what the situation is. So I always want to leave room for flexibility, and that's what I would be thinking on that issue. So those would be my concerns, is just flexibility, flexibility of the planning commission in both incident, in both incidences. Right now, just out of curiosity, if somebody does have a Verbo or or Airbnb, do they come to the plan? Do they just do it on their own?
Currently, they just do it on their own. It is, in essence, they are currently prohibited in the city because we, it's not a listed use, but we only allow rooming and boarding if it's over thirty consecutive days. What this is doing is just more explicitly prohibits it. We are currently enforcing them as a prohibited use, we are just clarifying. We are just clarifying it in our code and more explicitly also placing guidelines on the backyards and pools as well as rooming and boarding.
So right now, Airbnbs and the verbals are prohibited?
Correct.
And if they do have one to...
We contact the owner and let them know that they're currently not allowed within the city.
And that's what we're doing right now.
That is currently how we are operating.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Smalling.
So instead of objecting, I strenuously object to STRs. I mean, that's kind of, sorry, that was a movie reference, but it's, start with the STRs in, in the, in the backyards situation. I think it's, I mean, we already have a ban in place, sure, we can update the, the zoning, I, I think if, if, you know, people, if the commission thinks so. I think it's not needed, we already have it in place, but I, you know, I always get concerned about unintended consequences to things, to bans, right? We don't, we don't know what the, what the world's going to look like tomorrow, and if we didn't learn that during COVID, we should make sure that we're thinking about things like that. So I could go either way with, with STRs and, and backyards. I think where I get concerned about the reporting mechanism, as I asked Jennifer, is it's really from neighbors reporting neighbors, right? And I think, you know, I think Chair Roberts, I'm not sure if you, if you feel the same way, but I've mentioned this before, probably the most painful ruling that the commission had to make in my time was when someone had a RV cover...
Yes.
...and he got reported, and he showed forty pictures of other homes without the addresses, saying, why am I being picked on? And I get concerned about, you know, a neighbor saying, you know, neighbor dispute, saying that person has an STR, that person's renting out their backyard because they have a lot of parties, and now we have, we're wasting city resources on it. And so that's, that's an example of an unintended consequence of this. And so that, that's definitely a concern, and I don't think we have very great compliance or, or ways to check it. I get the overall goal, right? I think the housing, I don't like using the word crisis, because I think if you eliminated all the STRs in the state of California, that would certainly help, but a lot of them are located in more vacation-destinated locations, like near beaches and what have you. So I, I guess I'm, I'm more okay with the STRs, because I don't think it's really a problem. I guess where I'm, I'm more concerned about is the backyard rentals. Not that I think they should happen, but I think that's where the, you're going to get false reports for someone being irritated with a neighbor because of, maybe they have a party, they have a big family and they have a party every month, and a neighbor gets tired of it. So that's a, that's a concern, and by doing a ban on them and, you know, what's going to happen, right? Maybe we escalate a neighbor feud beyond, right? And we create a different set of problems. And that's my concern around specifically the backyard. I think when it comes to car washes and gas stations, I'm, this, this is a tweak, and this is a different process for us, right? We, it went to LUD, we had two council members vote, you know, bring this forward to us, and now we're, we're voting on it, right? So it feels like we're kind of intervening in the process a little bit, but that's the design. But I, I think I'm more comfortable with using the word cap, right? So if there's eighteen plus nineteen, right, with Costco, is that we cap it at nineteen. We get the same effect, but it gives us the flexibility, and it also helps, you know, what, some of these, some of these gas stations, I'm sure are corporate-owned, some of these may be mom-and-pop type shops, and it gives them the opportunity to sell when they want to sell to somebody, and it allows them to maybe make a little bit more money to that new person. We don't know when gas-powered cars are truly not going to be around. It's probably not going to be in our lifetime, because it just, just, the market is five percent today in, in Brentwood. So I would be more comfortable with a cap on both car washes and gas stations versus a ban, because it's, I think it, I think it gets us the same place, but gives us the flexibility. And if, and if somehow someone wanted to move one, we have to make sure the PDs are tight, right, and the zoning requirements are tight, so they don't end up near residential developments, because we've had those discussions up here before. But I think I always look for the flexibility that we need to attract businesses, and also give the current business owners a way, a, a path forward as well, and a path maybe to selling to somebody else so that they can retire with a, with an additional nest egg. To me, that makes logical sense, it accomplishes the same goal, but it gives us additional flexibility with it. To the fuels, I would, I would not be in favor of, of striking all the fuels, only because we don't know what the next technology is, right? It may be on that list. Can tell you as an example, biofuels is, in mass production, is way off in the future. I deal with customers who make biofuels or are trying to make biofuels in mass, and so it's, it's not something that's going to be common. I understand that, I certainly don't, wouldn't want a hydrogen station near my house, but it's, if the technology is safe and deemed safe, I, again, would want that flexibility to have it there. I do think we need to think about the EV charging station, because I know the EV charging stations themselves would be administratively approved, but thinking about, like, if we have limited land use left, which we do, and then someone wants to put twenty chargers, which essentially is a gas station except it's electric, that's also the same use of land, which is where I was going to go when I said this is not a clarifying question. I think that's also something that we should think about before we just, we, we potentially either pass or reject this, because I think it needs to be worked out a little, that specific part needs to be worked out a little bit more.
May I ask an additional, just a quick question?
Of course.
If we were, God forbid, if we were to have like an earthquake or something like that, or, or some major catastrophe and wiped out...
It's when we're going to have it.
Huh?
It's when we're going to have it.
Let's say they wiped out five, five service stations, a whole swath of Brentwood, would all in a sudden we be limited down, in the way it's written, would we be limited down to, let's say we had nineteen, and we would be limited down to twelve or fourteen?
So if you have an existing legal service station, if it were to burn down or have some catastrophic event, typically our legal non-conforming section of our code allows it to be built back at its current condition. So if something were like that to happen, the current stations could rebuild.
In that same spot?
In that same spot.
And if it couldn't be built in that spot, would we be limited to...
Then what it would do is what I was referring to before, most likely you would have to go through a rezoning, which would require planning commission and city council approval to allow it to move forward.
So, you know, I, I, I think that one of the core things I'm hearing is enforcement on, on the extended stays, and that we're waiting or we are relying on our neighbors to report. But it's interesting, because I went online not long ago for Airbnb here in Brentwood, and they're listed. So I'm trying to figure out how they're, how they're listed, and, because I shouldn't see anything, I shouldn't see anything, but they're listed in Brentwood. So it, it's, it, there is a concern. I think that we need to probably clean house a little bit more, and I think that this is the way we go about beginning that process. But I think, and I don't know that we can do this, how you, part of the enforcement factor beyond our neighbors is fines. You start fining people substantially, well, that's a whole different ballgame. I don't know that we can do that. I think that probably has to elevate itself to council, but just telling someone that they can't do this, that, or the other, the trickery is out there, and it works, and it's been working not just in this municipality, but in many municipalities, under the guise of family or, or some kind of emergency. So I'm, I'm concerned that we would probably find ourselves shutting down what needs to be shut down with some, and allowing, not intentionally, for others to continue on in business. So I, I don't know how we, we get there, but that is a concern. As far as what Commissioner Floyd was talking about and striking some of those, those items, I, I couldn't agree with you more. Coal and, on hydrogen, if it, if it's coming down the pipe, let it come back to the planning commission and reopen it and have a conversation about it, and, and then you put it in. And I do like the idea of not prohibiting, but to, as Commissioner Smalling was saying, we would, what's her term? It was capping. Because capping gives us a little flexibility, gets us there, definitely gets us there, but in the event of we, we, we can, we can look to the market down the road, not knowing what we know now, ten years from now, and, and have that flexibility. So there's a lot going on here. I don't know that we're in a position, commission, commissioners, there's a lot going on here. And I think it's, it's, it's a great discussion. I don't know about you, but I, I'd like to have a little more study on this for myself. Or we can, you know, kind of grind it out and agree, I, I think some of this is pretty easy to get to. Caps, I think we can all get to that. I think we can strike hydrogen and coal and those things. But the extended stay, that, that, that is a little troubling for me, because I, I was on the commission when somebody did get caught with something they didn't pull a permit for, but, you know, twenty pictures showed up of others, and they had not been cited. And I don't know that they were ever cited, and, and that to me shows, if we're not going to go after everyone, then we should be going after no one. That, that's, that's my stance. If, if we say we're, we are not going to permit something, then we're not permitting it for anyone. We cannot allow the neighbors to be the ones to, to make the call, and two blocks over, no one's made the call on them, and they're permitted to go on breaking code. So that is troubling for me, and I remember how difficult that session was. So that being said, we can continue to have more discussion on this. I think what we probably wanted, how we want to go about this is one item at a time, and probably the easiest item at, at this time would be, for me anyway, would be the, the gasoline stations and the EV. We can start there and then go into the next platform with car washes, and then the next with extended stays, if, if that's okay with the commissioners.
Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Before we do that, there were some comments made that I'd like to address about the general enforcement and things of that nature.
Absolutely.
Just some of the general principles expressed, because I don't agree with very much of it at all. If somebody breaks into your backyard and seals your deck chairs, the police don't come until you call them. Somebody has to report it. If there's a violation of any kind, somebody usually has to report it. We have code enforcement, community enrichment in our town, but it's code enforcement, and basically they do drive around and look at things from time to time, but most of what they do is they, is they handle complaints of any stripe, and that's just how it has to be, because we can't have Big Brother, you know, like cameras everywhere watching the entire city. Pretty much every crime has to be reported, every infraction has to be reported, and to say that it's the neighbors, yeah, everybody here is a neighbor, we're all residents, we're all responsible for our community. So that's, that's one thing. As far as not telling people what they can and cannot do with their personal property, what, how, how they can use it, as a planning commissioner, every application that comes before us, almost every application has a conditionally-used permit, and a conditionally-used permit is a list of twenty to thirty items of things people can, can and cannot do with their property. Zoning, zoning has been sanctioned by the United States Green Court since nineteen sixteen. We do have the right to do planning on our neighbors in, in our cities. We do have the right to tell people what they can and cannot do with their property, and it has always been that way. I, I mean, this idea that all of a sudden, well, we can't, we can tell them they can't, you know, build a, a gas station in Deer Ridge, but we can't tell them that they, they can't do some other commercial operation? I don't know, you know? I, I don't really, I don't subscribe to that at all. I, I believe that we serve a purpose here, and the purpose is almost exclusively Title Seventeen, which is a long list of things that people can and cannot do with properties, and which properties they can and cannot do them on. So it's a lot of talk, but it doesn't really mean anything. So to sit here and say, oh, if we, you know, say no STRs, but the neighbors have to report it if they see it, so therefore it's not a valid law? I mean, murder is against the law, but if nobody reports a murder, you know, it just doesn't get enforced. You know, the police don't know about it, they can't go and apprehend anybody. If nobody is apprehended, the DA can't bring charges, can't take them to court. Everything that we do as a society requires us as citizens to be vigilant of our surroundings, and STRs are no different from anything else. So sure, could somebody have an STR and get away with it, and somebody next door have an STR and not get away with it, because one got reported and one didn't? Yeah, that can happen. Is that, is that fair in some sense? Maybe not, but it's the way the whole world works. Every infraction has to be reported. I mean, if, if happens, you know, like the police might see a speeder or something, and that's, it's good if the police can see something directly and, and do something about it, for the most part, everything is reported. So no, I don't buy this, that because people have to report something, that means it's not a valid law. It just, it makes no sense at all. And because we're telling people what they can and can't do with their property, what are we even doing up here, except telling people what they can and cannot do with their property? That's the whole function of the planning commission. So, so no, I, I don't agree with any of this stuff. I, I just think it's a lot of nonsense, honestly, and I, I say that with all due respect, but I just don't understand how a person can say, we can't tell people what to do with their property. We do it all the time, it's what we do. Thank you.
Commissioner Brand?
Madam Chair, can I, can I just interject for a quick second, just with regard to enforcement of STRs? Because I think I could add...
Sure.
Add something to that conversation, if, if you don't mind. So I, I, and I will say this, I've, I've worked on projects related to short-term rentals in a number of different cities, including beach towns, towns that were, had, had other attractions where the market for short-term rentals was a lot more robust than in, than in Brentwood. And if you would have seen the report to LUD, we did make a comment that there's a lot of short-term rental activity in the neighboring communities, but not a whole lot in Brentwood. That may change over time, but, but where I'm kind of going with this is that in every jurisdiction, enforcement of short-term rentals is a challenge. It's a challenge, because even when you go to Airbnb or VRBO and you're looking at a site, you'll notice that they don't, they don't identify what the address is of the unit. You can sort of get a sense when you look on a map and, and do maybe a look on, on, Google Maps, for example, but unless you sort of actively go after that unit, you're not, you don't, you're not aware of the address. What, how it is, how it'd be a little bit more easier in, in Brentwood is the fact that you don't have a very robust short-term rental market. So as, as part of that code enforcement effort, periodically reviewing those sites, looking at VRBO, looking at Airbnb, looking at all these other platforms, you can start to get a sense, because typically, someone that has a short-term rental has that property advertised over multiple platforms. So you can start to see, you know, where the one or two or three of them are in Brentwood. And the, the, you know, what staff may have mentioned earlier about, you know, relying on, on citizens to, to, to point out where a short-term rental is, it's true. It, it's, you know, in code enforcement, I can tell you, is for the most part reactionary, it's reacting to a complaint, it's reacting to, you know, someone disturbing the peace of some sort. So there are ways that Brentwood can go about and sort of make the enforcement aspect a little, little tougher by doing a little investigation. And like I say, the good news is that there, the market for STRs in Brentwood isn't so vast that, that it would be a complicated process.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that explanation. Commissioner Brand?
Jennifer, you mentioned something about when language is clear within the municipal code with...
code with respect to, I presume, what, the way it's written here is that we can then go to these primary source websites that feature substantial STRs and essentially have them sort of thwarted on the introduction end versus on the enforcement side. Is that, is that a fair statement?
We can notify them, but they have no obligation to ban or prohibit the listings on their site. But we can go ahead and do that. The other benefit that it does have to the city is right now, it's very difficult to say that STRs are prohibited, because it's not that they're prohibited, it's that they aren't listed as uses. We currently only allow rooming and boarding. And so getting out the word to the public, to people who rent the rooms out, you can't necessarily put a social media outreach to say STRs are prohibited. What we could say is that rooming and boarding is allowed. The converse of that is that if it's not rooming and boarding, it is not allowed. So this, by including this specific definition, it allows us to start heading it off on multiple fronts. We could put the social media out there and say, although it was previously not allowed, it is now explicitly prohibited. And we can notify the community, they can be better aware. But also, we do proactively search these databases. We don't 100% solely go on complaint basis. We do search these, we go on Swimply, we go on VRBO, we go on Airbnb. We do look for specific Brentwood properties. And where we can identify them, we do, and we proactively identify and contact those owners. So it is not 100% on neighbor complaints. I don't know the exact percentage of complaints versus ones that we find out, but we do go on, our community enrichment does go on and search those databases.
Yeah, and just to comment to that, I spoke to probably about a dozen people and asked them if they knew or not. And everyone thought that they, everyone I spoke with, dozen people, random residents in Brentwood, they all thought it was allowed. And it's one of those communication things, it's like you said that. And what popped in my mind is this sort of front yard maintenance little flyer that the city gives out, right? It says a number of things. And to the enforcement point, right, I can count probably eight trees in my neighborhood that don't have that 10-foot cut for the garbage truck to go by. And, you know, I'm not going to go around reporting people, but like, it's also, it's like, it's a great example of like, yeah, that's a, that's a common courtesy to our, you know, waste management folks, but, you know, it's a good example of something that, it's like, yeah, we need to call that out from a functional standpoint in a way similar that we see with this STR situation, where it's like, yeah, we need to be as explicit as we can be, as well as share with the community that it's like, this is not something that is not specifically allowed. And in terms of the, I know we've been chatting briefly about this idea of limiting the quantity of stations, we'll call it, circling back to the gas station discussion, right, we said 19, right, because 18 plus 1. I know cities like Walnut Creek and some others have instituted this on similar veins. And, you know, when you talk about the realm of, like, unintended consequences, that's another avenue in which some areas do also struggle with, you know, they begin putting caps on various businesses as far as quantities versus either allowing them or not allowing them. And I can't imagine how the, you know, let's say, a gas station closes up shop, do we have an auction for the site to put in the, like, how do we do that? Is it the highest bidder? I don't know. But, you know, we, it's, maybe. Now, if you want to let the market speak, it's like, I think what the market is telling us is that there's a diminishing need for petroleum-based fuels in the city of Brentwood. And, you know, if we say that there's no more, I think the progressive demand itself will sort of take care of the rest. But we don't need to allow the convenience of any more because there's really no need. We have them essentially along the perimeter of the town, right? When Brentwood Boulevard was originally an auto thoroughfare before the bypass, right? Lone Tree is our, presumably our widest street in the entire city. And Balfour, right, main thoroughfare to get back to Highway 4. That's where all these things, that's serving all of our commuters. And also, it's like, there's a reason we don't have them in the center of town. And so I'm seeing that, you know, if I'm going to make the emotional argument here, it's that all I hear from residents is, we don't want gas stations, we don't want car washes. It's like, we're the gas station, car wash town. It's the, you know, talking about the whole thing of, are we a commuter town, are we a bedroom community? Like, what speaks to the definition of our town? And what I feel is though, is when I look at these amendments to our municipal code, what it does is it helps shape this town into, in a way that is steering in the directions of the wants and needs of the residents. And I'm leaning towards these as guideposts for the way that our town looks now and in 10, 20, 30 years. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
So, I just have another question. I kind of agree with Chair Roberts about the amount of stuff that we're going through because we keep jumping back and forth between service stations and that this is a lot. And I wish we could focus on one. Maybe, you know, really do a deep dive. I really appreciate Commissioner Brand and what he was just talking about, so. But I just have a question on rooming and boarding, just for my own edification. So if I had my house and I wanted to rent out a room, not on Airbnb, just rent out a room, could I? How would that work?
It wouldn't.
Not that I wanted to.
Yeah. So, I mean, as a private interaction, the city does not get involved. Our code indicates that you could rent out a room as long as it's for more than 30 days at a time. That would be an allowable use in a residential zone.
So if I had an ADU, wanted to rent it out?
Month to month.
Month to month. And if I rented it out, but I didn't tell, like, I didn't put it on Airbnb and I did for two weeks, what would happen?
I would never know about it.
And so, no, I'm just, I guess what I'm getting at is, if I advertised it not on Airbnb, I put it on Craigslist, or I did something, what would happen?
The city can only go after what we can factually prove. If the city has evidence, even if your neighbor complained that you rented it every other weekend, unless the city has factual evidence, unless the city can provide a post from Airbnb, provide a Craigslist reference, something like that, the city would not be able to take action against you. So it does take some form of evidence in order to enforce our city's codes.
Okay. I just have a struggle with this, you know, the variety of things. But I see, I do see the points that are being made about, you know, how to make this happen. I just think it's, it requires a lot more, I don't know how long LUD was wrestling with this, I really don't, but it's interesting. And I, you know, going, now I'm jumping, I'm doing it myself, I'm jumping back to the gas stations thing, you know? Gas stations, they're, if the marketplace is going to determine what's going to happen, they're going to start failing, people aren't going to build them because they're not profitable. You know, it's not profitable. They got, they want to make a return on their investment, they're not going to build anything that they don't deem profitable, for sure. So it's complicated. I wish we could take on this one at a time. My, would be my preference, just taking on one at a time.
I think I could help Commissioner Johnson with that concept just a little bit. Given the example that you just gave, if you knew that you were not supposed to rent out that ADU for two weeks, I'm going to go ahead and speak for you and say you would not do it, because you knew it was against the law.
Yeah, maybe I wouldn't and you wouldn't, that doesn't mean 65,000 people wouldn't.
I would say that of the 65,000 people, 64,500 are probably honest people. Most people, most laws are obeyed because people want to obey the law, they just want to know what the rules are. We don't have to enforce, you know, I don't know what you're envisioning, or if we make it illegal, I don't know what you're envisioning, how many people would still be doing it that had to be caught? It's like most laws, most people obey most laws most of the time because most people are good. And that's just that people have jobs, they work, they have kids that look up to them. You know, this idea that everybody's a miscreant, that has to be monitored at all times to make sure they don't break any rules, it just, it's wrong. We are a nation of laws, we obey the law for the most part, and most of us do it voluntarily and proudly, because that's what our society is. You know, we are free people. And we stay free because we respect each other and we respect the law. And so this whole thing, this argument about enforcement, it's, you're just prolonging this discussion for no good reason. I mean, why are we still even here? I mean, I hear a lot of talk around town about how these meetings take so long. This is a simple proposition. And reading into it, like, well, how are we going to enforce it? And how are we going to do this? The same way we enforce every other law, the Brentwood Municipal Code, pretty much everything in there is an infraction. So if it's a felony, the DA can take it to court. If it's a misdemeanor or less, then there has to be a complaint. That's just the way the law works. It's, every law works that way. There's no law that works any different than that. Are you saying we shouldn't have any laws? Are you saying we shouldn't have a law against stealing a roll of lifesavers at the 7-Eleven because, you know, kids steal it once in a while? I just don't get this argument about enforcement. If we can't enforce it, you know, 100%, we can't have this law? What are you trying to say?
Look, we already have something on the books for STRs anyways. I'm not sure what this does really significantly different. The, they're, all three of these items are connected in one resolution, right? So we can't really move on one without all of them. I would have preferred that they were three different resolutions because they're three different topics, right? And the end goal is the same, but it's one. So I don't see how there's a mechanism to break them up if there was a desire to break them up.
I can explain that, too.
Which Jennifer already has. I have the mic. So I don't know if there's a way to do that, and if there is, because there's, I've heard at least two people ask that they wish they could break it up. I don't know if there's a third, but that's where we're at, right? We have one resolution.
Okay.
So let me get involved here.
Well, can I just answer one point? Because Mr. Vice Chair Spaulding said something that's incorrect. We don't have a law on the books that specifically bans STRs. We don't have a law on the books that permits them. And what Jennifer just told us is we don't have a ban on them, they're just not a permitted use. So is, like, you know, you can't slaughter cattle in your garage, that's also not a permitted use, but we don't have a law banning it. By making a law that says STRs are banned, now we have something that we can promote to the community. Right now, we don't. And so that was, that was the point of it, is that we don't actually have something on the books that specifically addresses STRs, they're just omitted as a use. So it's a very different thing than having an actual ban that specifically calls them out. And that's what was in the staff report as well.
So let's just reflect on this. We've got three items that we are looking at here. We have the STRs, which is giving, we're talking language here, correct? Giving language to the STR. We're talking, making sure that gasoline station is not, we're not bringing any more gasoline stations into our community. And car washes, the same. Did I get that right? And the reason for all of these is listed in the staff report. Did I get that right? Okay. So I guess where we are now, because, and I'm, I'll take full responsibility for believing that we needed to have more context. In fact, this is just defining what was not there for the STR, correct? So now we have a definition. And let me ask you another question. At any point in time, if this becomes an issue or becomes something that needs to be revisited, it can be revisited, correct?
Correct.
All right. That being said, is there any more discussion on this? I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-041, recommending that the City Council adopt an ordinance approving a zoning text amendment to the Brentwood Municipal Code, RZ 24-005, which would prohibit new gasoline fuel stations, new car washes, and short-term rentals, and expand permission for alternative fuel stations and electric vehicle charging stations.
Second.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Okay, let's move on. We now have a report of informational reports. A transplan?
Uh, no meeting this month.
Design review.
No meeting.
And land use is coming up, so there's none for me either. Municipal, Brentwood Municipal Court Review.
No, they meet, we'll meet in January, but.
Request for future agenda items. Commissioner Floyd?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Brand?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Spaulding? I have one. So I believe that this body needs to keep itself sharp. And in keeping itself sharp, there needs to be something in the budget for an annual academy visit that comes up every year. We cannot do our jobs as efficiently as other municipalities do without the resources that are necessary for us to visit the academy. And the academy brings about the laws, the mandates, it keeps us up to date. I think we, with the exception of Commissioner Spaulding, we have done this, we did this earlier this year, and I think every year, because every year is a new, it's something new. That needs to be something that is mandated, and I won't say mandated, but needs to be put in the budget for the Commissioners here in Planning. Making sure that there is enough money in the budget for us to go wherever we need to go to get the intel that we need to have in order to make the decisions that we come to make on this dais. So I'd like that to be something that is brought before a possible agenda item and then, yeah, and keep it like that. Okay. I told you I was going to do it.
Yes, you did, just briefly, since it's not agenda dais for the chair. I actually, and this is in response to an email that Chair Person Roberts had sent to me earlier today, I did respond. It happened to be during the meeting tonight, so you'll see it. I think there's a little bit of confusion in terms of what you're asking for, so take a look at that. We can also chat afterwards. I think your concerns will be addressed, but if they're not, we can certainly bring it back at some point.
Okay, I appreciate that.
No problem.
All right. And with that said, I will enter a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Well, I'll see everyone at our next meeting. And yeah, thank you. Thank you and travel safely.